This conference will now be recorded.
We'll start off by calling the meeting to order and item one on the agenda is our consent agenda items.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda items, one, A, B, and C.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Schreiber, a second by Councilman Adcox. Will the clerk please call them?
Hello.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullin.
Yes.
Yes.
Item two is request or comments from the public. If we have anyone who wants to share with us this evening, please keep in mind that you'll have three minutes. When you get down to 30 seconds left, I'll give you a little sign that we'll be moving on shortly. And then just to wrap that up, also keep in mind that we cannot respond during your three minutes. That is your three minutes and it won't be interrupted, so we can't respond to any questions during that time. If you stick around, if you have questions, then a lot of times those are addressed at the end of the meeting during council comments, or staff will follow up. If we have anyone who would like to give public comments, now would be the time to do so.
Hello. Thank you all for what you've been saying. I know it's long and hard out there. I know we all appreciate it. Sometimes we get off the field, but it's hard work. Rhonda Smiley, 10526 Richland Avenue. First question, I think is going to be answered on the agenda today, but I was going to ask about how it's going with the Richland Avenue improvements. Number two, now that we have the disclosure of the new development west of Edwardsville that Everdue was all concerned about, i.e. being a motel development, do we have any more information about what they're doing on substations or transmission lines or anything service that? Third, do we have any long-term plans for getting sewers to the north end development area that's in our plan? I haven't heard since I got here. Now, since we have others coming in, I'm going to. I got my truck crushed by a storm. I don't want to let that happen in rain.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Don't do that to the Range Rover. That thing is us.
Any other public comments? There being none, we will move on to item. I just flipped my paper over. Item number three, we'll hear a presentation on city facilities from Fogle Anderson Construction and Pinkwell Williams Architecture Representatives. And I'll let you go ahead and kind of introduce everybody if you'd like to. I was going to ask council, just since we have a few presentations tonight, let's, if we're able to keep questions to the end of the presentation, a lot of times they'll answer it a slide or two after we ask.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor Council, I'm Roger Summers, Fogle Anderson. Patty is our construction manager. Ellen Foster from Pinkwell Williams Architecture make some presentations. Roger has some opening remarks, and he's been with us from the beginning. And I think we have a good presentation that's going to be very informative. Roger.
Do we need to use this?
Yeah, that does do that. Sorry.
All right. Thank you for this opportunity. I see some familiar faces, but some new faces. So again, I'm Roger Summers. I'm with Fogle Anderson Construction Company, one of the partners there. And almost a year ago, we went through a qualifications process for construction manager for the city facilities. Really, the starting point of that was to try to assess what the city currently had, what the city needed. And as part of that process, we worked with city administration and the selection committee at the time to evaluate design firms to help master plan, programming, things like that, to really get a needs analysis put together and a master plan for the facilities put together. So we could, once that advances to a certain state, then we'll be able to start putting costs to it from a construction standpoint. So through that competitive process, Pinkwell Williams was selected as the design partner. And we started building through programming site analysis, conceptual master planning, some different options, and made some progress, got some consensus on the direction for the facilities. And about that time, the city manager announced his resignation. And there was an interim, and then there was election. And the decision was made last fall to put the process on hold, knowing that the city management position needed to be settled in a permanent way. And with an election coming, it made more sense to not move forward beyond the point where you all as new city council would have input in the process. So everything stopped. We didn't lose anything other than time while we waited for this all to play out. But now that you're all in place, we're picking up the ball at the end of the meeting. So Ellen and her team are going to give you an assessment of kind of how we got here or to where we're at currently with the design and what the plan is to move forward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm Ellen Foster with Pinkwell Williams Architecture. Thanks for that introduction, Roger. So yeah, we just wanted to walk you through kind of the steps that we took after we came on board in summer of last year, kind of through the fall, when we put the project a little bit on hold. And so, you know, a lot of work was put into those couple of months that we were working through just sort of the concept, the programming, and evaluating the need for new facilities. And when we start every project, we like to come up with what we like to call guiding principles, which helps us stay focused on what, why are we doing this? What are our main goals and vision for the project? And so the initial team kind of set out these several guiding principles, which is to create a public facility on a, in campus for the public. This is really a way to initiate a vision for this heart of Edwardsville that I know you all have talked about over the years. You know, we're, we want to be economic stewards for the city. We're always mindful of that. Creating a facility the community will be proud of, focused on well-being of staff and the critical nature of the services that you all provide, the police department, the fire department, and the city administrative services. And then the connectivity of the campus itself within the larger context of Edwardsville. We felt like those captured really the essence of what we were trying to do in a meaningful way. So with those in mind, you know, what we started off doing was just evaluating the existing conditions, identifying a need. So we all know the facilities that we're in tonight, the adjacent facilities here that your police is operating out of and that the fire department is operating out of really have outgrown those facilities, right? The police department was intended to be a temporary facility 10 years ago. And so it's still there today, the trailer facility, that doesn't really meet the needs for the safety and security of the officers and really the best practices for what they do every day. The fire department has really outgrown that existing facility. It was built for apparatus that were much smaller, you know, thirty-five, forty years ago. And they've really outgrown that facility. So we've really identified a need. The bunk facility and the fire department, for example, men and women share that bunk facility. That's not really best practice, so we want to continue going forward. Storage space is at a premium. Just the infrastructure of the buildings is really needing to be upgraded. So with that, we established the program, you know, what are the elements of the building that we need to account for, which includes city hall and administration, which really we felt like a shared courtroom and council chamber was really an efficient way to meet the needs of the city and creating some shared community meeting spaces, identifying some resources for the community to include library and computer lab space. And then the police department, fire station both, making sure that we're meeting the enhanced security and best practices for both of those departments and accommodating some growth without overbuilding. So we're really trying to be conscious of not, you know, asking for the world, but asking for what's going to be, meet the needs for best practices. And then site evaluation. So we have a couple of partners on board that have helped us really evaluate the existing site. Carissa with Land Works, you moved out. Carissa with Land Works is here, she's going to talk kind of about the site. Everybody knows this location, but there's some unique features and things we want to talk about with the site.
Thank you, Ellen. Good evening. I am Carissa McMullin. I'm a landscape architect with Land Works Studio, and we've been brought on to be part of this team. And when we saw this arc come out, we were very excited because this site and this project offers so much opportunity for the city of Edwardsville. One being that this is a nice piece of city-owned property for the city to expand its facilities. It's located in the business district, and it's just got the potential to set up to be like Ellen said, and one of the guiding principles of being the heart of the community, be where everyone sees the great facilities that the city of Edwardsville can offer. This is the city limits line. The big balloon there shows the property. We're close to the river. About 10 square miles, and we're servicing 50 employees currently. When we start a project like this, we like to look at the site. We call it a site analysis. This is just a quick and dirty sketch of the things that we look at. Again, some of the things that excited us about this piece of property was the access from the east. How, as you're driving towards this piece of property, this has the potential to set up to be a really nice visual experience. Similarly, as you come through on Fourth Street, we've got opportunities to see how the building's set up and how this campus plays out. This piece of property, also, as we took a look at it, and you can see here, there's some green space. So there's opportunity to have outdoor civic space for the community to engage with and respond to as well. We show here, we've got some overhead electric utilities. We need to look at how we're going to mitigate the impacts that the utilities have. And that overhead electric is probably the most challenging. Stormwater is shown here. We do have a lot of square footage to work with. The plan is to manage the stormwater on the site without sending too much runoff. One of the other things that we looked at was the connectivity. We know that a lot of the community uses pedestrian, bicycle, and they have the ability to do that with this piece of property, with the sidewalks that are there now and with the sidewalks that are coming on the west side of Fourth Street to the park property and down to the river, of course. It's a great opportunity to have connectivity within this site and then also with the residents themselves. And then also, the residential community to the west. We wanted to make sure that we were opening this project up so that the property was pleasing from not just those who would see it coming from the east, but those who live to the west as well really feel like they can engage with this piece of property.
Great. So that, all of that research and programming and site analysis led us to really what we're proposing to be the conceptual master plan. So we went through several iterations of how we could accommodate all of the different programmatic functions on this site. And this is just showing a couple of the iterations, going from just very schematic, you know, blocking diagrams to a little bit more refined. And really, all of these iterations led us to sort of what we are proposing to be, the concept, the master plan concept, which incorporates all three public functions in one filter that can be accessed from Third Street to the east. It provides opportunity for secure parking for police vehicles and staff, as well as public parking. It's also phased in a way that will not disrupt the current services, so the existing buildings can remain where they are until the new facility is completed. There'll have to be a little bit of phasing of parking and such, but the buildings themselves and the city functions can be continuous. It also preserves the existing fire station for potential future city use. If there's additional storage, fleet storage that may be utilized there, potentially offices that maybe don't get incorporated into the main building, or future commercial use. It could be a leasable facility. So the opportunities are kind of endless with what that existing fire station could be. We feel like this is one of the more, we looked at several iterations of a standalone fire station and combined police and city building, but we felt like the best use of resources in the most financial sense would be to do all of them in a combined facility for several different reasons. But one is to maximize the systems of the building itself and the phasing approach to it. If you do it all, if you build all at once, it's more cost-effective than having to phase it out over multiple projects. We're also showing, as Carissa mentioned, some opportunities for green space and public plaza. So there's, the way the building is situated on the site kind of sets up an edge for creating that connection between pedestrian and building, while also carving out some potential plaza and community outdoor space. We do have an alternate concept that shows a separate, like I was mentioning, a separate fire station building and a combined police city building. We feel like this could be an alternative if we felt like we needed to break the project apart into multiple phases. But really, the essential qualities of both planned concepts remain the same in that it could be built for all the existing facilities are still in existence and sets up for a similar approach to the site. With that, I just kind of wanted to summarize what our next steps will be, and then would be happy to take any questions if there are any. So at this point, we have more work to do in order to get enough information to Roger's team to put a conceptual budget to. So we want to just revisit the program one more time to make sure that we're being smart about square footage and tightening where we can, being efficient, and really sharpening our pencils on the program. And then we will develop the master plan that you just saw into an actual conceptual design, a three-dimensional architecture that will be easier to visualize and apply materials to and roof lines to and really have context of the site. And then Fogle Anderson will help us put some numbers to that. So all of that is working towards the goal of having something back to you all for a valid initiative late summer or early fall for this year. And then this is just more of the fun, the fun stuff. You know, this is what we want to try to get into, is creating, getting some excitement around what this facility really could be. And we start by looking at precedent imagery, you know, placemaking, creating those outdoor spaces for the community, and just sort of getting some ideas about what the materiality could be, what this means for this site and this city. So those are our next steps.
Do you have approximately square footage for the whole, for like the city hall or PD and FD?
I don't have it broken down. I know our total combined square footage was somewhere in the 35,000 to 40,000 square foot. And again, that goes back to us. We need to go really hone in on the program. We had kind of done a, you know, all-in wish list when we initially did this concept plan, but we've got to go sharpen the pencil and make sure that we're really being good stewards of the space needs that the county has.
Is the city hall, is it, is it two stories on your, kind of thought about the size of the place?
The plan that we're showing is a single story. It's got all of that square footage on a single story. We had, we had talked about a two-story facility. It doesn't really make that much sense from an economic standpoint on this site. You've got the square footage to hold out, and building up is always more expensive than going out.
Yeah, we got the square footages to make it a ranch, so that's pretty nice.
Right, yeah. And I think functionally, you know, police and fire want to be on a ground level. And city administration could go up, but again, the way that the master plan was shaking out, it just made more sense to keep it on that level.
Ellen, you showed two diagrams, one with everything connected and then the other one with the fire and police separated. Are there, for our chiefs, is there pros or cons for having it separate or all together?
There.
I just want to be cognizant of our employees.
Sure, yeah. And those were conversations that were had during these initial programming meetings where both chiefs were in those meetings. In either scenario, the fire and police functions are really separate, regardless of if the buildings are connected or not. In this all-combinced scenario, the city functions are actually kind of in between the fire and PD. So from a functional standpoint, they really do want to be separate, you know, areas. And we've managed to achieve that even in a single building scenario.
Well, and I do remember, I trust you had their input. I just, being cognizant of what we're going to do this, we want them to have what they need.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming this evening. We sure appreciate you, and it's good to kind of get that update and get some council input.
Thank you. We're looking forward to the next steps and being back before you with some actual design concepts.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Item four on the agenda is your presentation on economic development from YN dot Economic Development Council Representatives.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor Council, we have Greg Kendall from YN dot EDC, who have had the opportunity since July to meet with fairly regular. And we've had a number of meetings, and it's been a truly a good, positive relationship. And he's going to share with us kind of what they've been up to on our behalf and on behalf of YN County overall.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mayor Council members. Appreciate you all having me this evening. And we always like to kind of give an update. And I was looking back, this has been just a little bit since we've been out here to give you a full update. I've talked to Mark quite a bit, and I've seen the mayor quite a bit, but I haven't seen the whole group. So hopefully, this will be a nice recap and answer some questions along the way. So here we go. So first off, we have a seventeen-member board, of which Mayor Teyhar is a member. City of Edwardsville is a permanent member of our board. We have seventeen members. We're a public-private organization. About half of our revenues come from public sources and about half come from private sources, grants, and other sources of funding. But I wanted to at least let you know who all is on our board. So you've seen this before in various configurations, but we really focus only four areas. The attraction part is what always captures the headlines and the stories on television. But we spend probably more of our time than anything on business retention expansion. So we have four and a half members of our team. Two and a half members of those folks are dedicated to retention and workforce. So workforce is the other one. About eight years ago, we started really focusing on the workforce side of it. Got a little bit of the head of the game on that and trying to make sure that we can meet the talent needs. We spend a great deal of time working on talent. We have far more databases than I would have dreamed we would invest in to try to keep ahead of where we are with companies and their talent needs. So we'll talk a little bit about that as we go as well. And then the last one is marketing and promotions. So we'll go just about anywhere. I had to talk to folks about why they ought to consider Edwardsville, what they should consider YN County, and have been fairly successful over the years. The industrial park has done phenomenally well. You've all been in the pro-business communities to work with, and that speaks a lot to the success of Edwardsville, just the fact that the folks in this room are largely the team that makes things happen. That does make it go easy and quick on our end of it. So in terms of where we've been historically, and we'll talk a bit more specific. So historically, it's been a very good run of economic development announcements and projects. Like all economic development organizations from all across the country, we focus on only three or four things, but then there's some of these other asterisks, right? So one of those things is capital investment. That's one of the metrics that folks tend to judge by is how well are you doing? Our goal in the last several years has been about a half million dollars a year in economic help projects. Last year was eighth best in county history. And this year, our goal, you'll see on the business plan slide, our goal this year is 750 million. And there are approximately three to four different pathways we could actually get to 750 million in announcements this year, all things being equal. So because we anticipate some fairly large investments coming forward, we did go ahead and raise our goal. Last year, that represented 27 projects. That's a little lower than we've seen. That's partly tied to the fact that we have some projects that actually we thought were to announce in 2023 that are likely going to happen in 2024. It's also a testament to the fact that money has become more expensive, it becomes more time-consuming. And even projects that, you know, 10 years ago, we worked on, say, an apartment project that was 32 million, and that was a big deal. Today, that same project is 50, $60 million. So it just takes a lot of money to do even the smallest of projects. And we are finding that it is very difficult to do these projects right now in light of the financial industry. And then square feet each were about 1.3 million. That has finally come back a little bit there during the pandemic. We were running about three, three and a half million square feet. Frankly, we were eating through a lot of land very, very rapidly, which represented in the numbers. But it was also difficult trying to keep up with what else do we have in the future then to develop? The good news is, if we develop that, you're all in the industrial park. That also means that those properties go full natural, more rapid with rank. The shorter they take to get it done, the faster you revenue show up. And then that represented just about 1,000 jobs, and that's about where we'll be this year as well. I won't go through this entire business plan, but I at least want you to know that we do have a business plan. We don't throw the baby out of the bath door, so you don't see major shifts in the business plan from YN here to the next. But you do start to see some nuances. Like, for instance, there is a specific that we want to look at, look at uniqueness of each individual community. Always, Roger, you follow that. And we're calling that out this year because we are finding that, particularly like Edwardsville, there are very specific sites that we're going to talk about that tend to pop up on a regular basis. And so we're beginning to focus on specific strategies with those locations or impediments, acknowledging what those impediments are, so we can figure out how to go around. Tonight, we'll kind of hit on that. The other piece that you'll see is we do go against quite a bit of time on the workforce solutions side. So we work with all the school districts now on these student career pathways, student tours. We used to just call them bus tours, now we got a fancy name. I always have to remember what fancy name is. But we work with all the school districts, including on our strings of Edwardsville, at least one, if not two tours every spring and fall, where we're connecting them to our companies, getting them in front of the community college, the educational providers, scholarship always given out. We've got sponsors swallow that. We're finding that that's a positive, right? So this is all tied back to figuring out the talent attraction piece where we've got to figure out new strategies to get our kids not only staying in YN County, stay in our communities, but identify with the jobs we have here. As you all probably know, we post this on social media a lot, YN County pays the highest wages in state counties. Now, your all's demographics, I got a slide on your all's demographics. It's very different than the rest of the county in terms of how it compares. But we are continuing to face this battle of trying to get our students and our kids connected to jobs in YN County because there's really good wage opportunities, whether that's that, you got tech and engineering, or any network of other jobs. There's just a great opportunity, so we want to connect this. So just a couple of slides, kind of show you how we sort of market here. So depending on where the project is coming from, this is a slide that we would use on a fairly regular basis to show where you can ship product to. And if you're manufacturing, this is how long it takes, so one day, two days, and three days, to get your product from one place to the next, from right here in the Edwardsville, YN County area. Usually placed pretty easy, it's very visual. So we often start from here, and then we'll go to a slide like this, or even one that's slightly larger, but for our purposes tonight, we would highlight how YN County, how Edwardsville, whatever locations we're pinpointing. We highlight at the map. Usually we'll have the airport, any other, if they're interested in educational providers or interested in thinking about Amazon in my head. So we would pinpoint where all of the other Amazon facilities are throughout the region. Or if they want to know specifically where FedEx or UPS is, or just whatever industry they're looking at. Food, for instance, would be another one. We've got maps that show throughout the region where those are, so we can identify how this location can drive their business model. And always just trying to figure out what's the hook, what's the driver for their project and try to make that connection. And then this would be another, you know, similar slide that we would put together, very brief on what we would normally show. But if we were talking specifically about Edwardsville, we would talk about the fact that you all have built up an industrial park in an incredibly quick amount of time, right? Fifteen years is about how long it took to build that industrial park out. That's a pretty phenomenal amount of rate. We've got a slide that shows where all of these companies are located. But we will often throw a slide like this to show the different types and breadth of companies that are in Edwardsville and what, depends on getting what they're looking for. They're only looking at certain types of industries, we might only throw those folks out there. But you can see that we talk a lot about the fact we produce quality products, we have a high-quality talent pool, we've got a lot of pride in the things that we do, that Midwestern environment, the work that we're doing around jobs, talent direction, and trying to connect folks to community college. And then the engagement part of it is also tied in with some of the workforce pieces of it, where we have monthly meetings with workforce solutions groups. And so we bring those companies into those that they're interested in and try to really find ways to engage in those companies. And then this is a little bit of. And then this is a little bit of a hybrid, but in this particular case, we'll talk specifically about some sites, but if this was a company and they were looking at three or four different sites throughout the county, we would throw a slide similar to this where we would highlight the locations, we would talk about how many acres are in that site, what's the appraised values, current taxes on that site, if there are infrastructure. We typically have a separate slide specific to each site, identifying what the existing infrastructure is, what is the proposed infrastructure or options for infrastructure? And then we would walk through, you know, what product sites have, what kind of air on it, which one's easier, what's the drivers for that particular community. In our case here, so speaking specifically about these four sites, I mentioned that we need to really begin thinking about very specific strategies around these four, what Mark and I did together every month. This often comes up in terms of which projects are working at this site. Mark's often in these meetings, if we qualify a project, so we'll force to meet with them, talk with them, engage with them. Those leads that will come in will come in either directly from investors of ours through other real estate brokers throughout the region, they may come from Kansas Department of Commerce, Kansas City Developer Council. We're investors in a group called Sexlighters Field, so there's a whole network of things that we invest in to try to bring leads into our organization. And then based on the criteria of land use, the land zone that exists, again, because of infrastructure requirements, retail, industrial, what kind of project is? And we'd probably say no to as many projects as we say certainly or that we'd say yes to. So just going to start from the top there. So on the north side, the former Hard Rock site, this is a very Accu site and yet we don't get a lot of movement because we know that bondholders are basically holding keys to this. We've been working with an Accu project for some time, as you know, Mayor and Councilmember. And that's a project that we were pretty hip on. We saw that as a really good opportunity and pushed it pretty hard and I think you all, you anyway, saw kind of how we model projects, how we provide some financial assistance, I know you all have, you're bond council. But in early steps, we do a lot of financial modeling, we determine what are the incentives that are available, how much revenue is going to be produced from the city, we can this, then here's the levers that we can pull, just trying to make sure that we're always driving a revenue stream and if there's how much is left in the kid, right? So it's not just free. For those I know who think that all we do is give away incentives, that is certainly not what we typically do. We're typically asking the question, what is the revenue? It's a retail project for us, how many sales? Do those sales make sense from what we've seen from others? How's it compare to a similar type of project? If they're talking about hotel rooms, then what kind of hotel is that a hotel that we go on? And so we take all those things into account and because we have been working with you all for a very, very long time, we build up sort of an internal database, if you will, something else that says this is the kinds of projects that the city will likely accept or not accept based on historical give and take, largely through the city manager, but also engagement with you all as well. So as I noted, legal issues on that north project is an ongoing problem. And, you know, right now, there is an Accu project in it that started in Edwardsville that is likely looking at another location within the county that we really wanted here. But because of the current legal situation, it's not probably going to happen. And so I just want you all to know and as much as I possibly can tell you that that is not what our plan was. We went out and attracted that project, we worked that project pretty hard, we developed relationships with those folks and we had every intention of that project going to that location. It is unlikely going to happen in light of the fact that we have these bondholders. And so if in fact this project goes to another location, it just, this is not the form this evening, but I would tell you that I think there's probably going to have to be a different conversation with those bondholders because it is at this point that I think you all begin to lose revenue and opportunities because they're holding the keys to that site despite the fact that we brought in a terribly good project in my opinion that about had a good revenue stream and made them whole and provided revenue to you all. So I belabor that, but just what you want to know in more public fashion that if that project comes forward in a public setting, I'm going to be irritated, not because I don't like them, but because that was designed for you all. So see the marriage again, you know what I'm saying? But the other issue that we're going to have on that north end is that most of the other projects that we have seen have often required about apartments and multifamily. And right now, we have said, look, we don't think that there's a lot of support for apartments in most types of multifamily, but again, I don't have to have nodding of the heads necessarily or vote, but I want you to know that that's the message that we're giving to development teams as well is that unless it was going to be a very high-end, you know, row house or town home development that was pretty upscale, it's probably unlikely that you all are going to support that. So if that is an erroneous assumption based on our conversations, then do let me know through the mayor and Mark because that is going to hamstring you all to some degree because most of these mixed-use developments are coming in with this as apartments. So I just want you all to be clear about what we're hearing and the feedback that we got. On the wood end of the 435 location, this has been a challenging location for a long time because there's, as you all know, there's a hole in the middle of that site with some challenges in it. And we've had different projects come forward over the years, we've talked to just about every major developer that there is in the market about that location and soon it will come back a second time. We are presently working with a mixed-use developer, does not include any multifamily, although originally it did and we said no. And so I think we'll see after having some feedback and some good discussions with them, we're doing some modeling right now and asking them to come back with some additional options to use the land a little bit more intensely and to hopefully better meet kind of the design criteria that has been fed back to us. So we'll know more about that. That's project restructuring, by the way. Kansas and 435, this is another one that has popped up many, many times. Its biggest issue is the lack of infrastructure and sewer in particular. And Mark and I had had some discussions about how could we parlay, some discussion with connecting to the unified government through some other locations and do a little training, if you will, and some interaction to make everybody happy. And I'm hopeful though that those conversations are successful in due time. The other thing we have said there is that we probably don't want a cross-stop. We probably don't want a trucking facility right there because it's too close to the childcare facility just inside KCK. It's, we certainly don't probably want them necessarily under improved road right way. I think some of the large lot of state folks would be irritated if that's the first thing that comes forward. And so we've been working now with a series of national developers, actually, that we hope will come back with a redesign that we think would hopefully better fit. But we do need a user that can actually use the infrastructure. Otherwise, there's no value in them spending the money to bring in the sewer because it is a fairly sizable expense to connect. And they're really, it's really, there might be two options, there's really just really one good option and Mark and I will look through that. And then at K32, there are a couple of different sites on K32 and we've had some fits and starts. You guys are familiar with those, those sites are challenged in some ways because of infrastructure. We've had some changes in the strategies with a couple of those locations that I think might speed that process up. But we have other road tracks, they're slender, skinny, so it's just the right user and we know that it needs to look the right way, so it kind of blends with what we already have. And so we just take a little bit of time, but if we wanted to just do projects, they would have all been done by now. So I will say that we're in a location, in a spot right now where we've got some infrastructure challenges, we've got some land use challenges that are not in complete compliance with what the market wants, but we're just staying the course based on what you've said you want. And so we're going to keep plugging away. I think we have pretty good direction, but it does require a lot of communications and hopefully we're providing that to the market. Now moving on into workforce, this just gives you a snapshot of where we are as a county. So even though we consider ourselves office from the county, the public community, who we are, we make great products by rights for our healthcare community, by a long shot and growing rapidly. So when the next tower comes up at KU and the cancer center comes up, those, each of those towers, we probably close to a thousand people. And so we'll continue to pack even more and more folks into the healthcare side, which is why we're often out in the high schools talking about kids being engaged in that healthcare world because it cuts across all social economics. You can be any level of education and do phenomenally well in the healthcare side, but it's huge. And then just noting that on the wage side, we talk sometimes a little bit negatively about manufacturing, but when you look at the wages that we pay in manufacturing, you can see why we also pay the highest wages in the state. So it takes pretty sizable wages right now to compete in YN County for those kinds of projects, but they're also advanced manufacturing, they're IT folks, right? So you really can't be in the manufacturing space and soon you're not going to be an IT worker because you can't do really any of that work without obligation. And then just kind of bringing it down to Edwardsville in terms of some demographics and residential, you all know this, you don't have enough residential tenant demand. If we built it, it would be here. The challenge, of course, is that you still have to have financing. And while it makes no real sense to me sometimes to see houses at a hundred and eighty-something or a hundred and two-hundred and something and bone elm, in fact, it's a no-risk environment for those folks and they know that they can sell those houses at a high dollar. We're in a model right now where we do larger lots here, do higher-end homes, but we're still competing with that Johnson County environment and in some cases love with them where they've established themselves as being in that mid to upper market. But I thought it was interesting just to look at the ranges of the four houses that were for sale and that replaces them for rent and then where folks are actually moving to Edwardsville, which I thought was interesting, but other than moving within the region, so largely from LA now, there's not a lot of data, right? There's probably three houses, so probably one of them came from LA. But nevertheless, I thought was interesting. And then you know your population labor market is higher than the county, median household income is significantly higher than the rest of the county and significantly higher than the city of Kansas. So I wish all of the county looked like the demographics here in Edwardsville and so we use that for sure. And the only thing I would say is that in terms of home values, when we see that next group of homes, they're going to be much, much higher valued homes. There's just, you just cannot build homes for really anything less than about three-hundred and fifty thousand. There's some recent announcements. As you know, the SRA came in and took over the Old Dominion location. We spent pretty little time trying to keep those folks here, I think it's turned out fine. Highland Ridge Town Homes participated in the RHID, is supporting that development. Dot Foods has done a nice job of cleaning up that space and being kind of a precursor at that 435. And then Fastenal will continue to expand, so this is a company that I think even point to year over year that you all have just always been incredibly good to work with them. They worked on a deal on Trail many years ago, helped with you all with that. I think there are more opportunities with them because we set that relationship in place ten years ago and have consistently had a great relationship with those folks. And then Bat Tech, again, we were disappointed when the creditors of that building left and the Bat Tech came in and they paid seventy-five thousand dollars a year. The wages were significantly higher, they renovated that building and they've been great contributors to the city's success. I mentioned that we're bringing on one of the, on the job side, so we have invested in our own, in our own job board that pulls and scrapes from a whole host of others, the Monster, LinkedIn, the whole range. And so you can see here, as of yesterday, we had a little over six thousand job postings just in YN County across all sectors. I know of those about a hundred and sixty of them here in Edwardsville. So we spend a big deal of time, we can, with Fastenal, to talk about what kinds of employees we work with, Alpha Broer and a number of others, about their wages, making sure they have that information and how they compare to others in YN County and across the region. So it's a long time. The last thing I'd say I would note is that we have rolled out a new initiative around Wyco Workforce Champions. And again, those will be companies that, you know, we see around our roundtables that you all participated in before. We do two of those every year in the industrial park, just try to make sure that we're keeping those companies as engaged as possible. There's always somebody out there trying to steal companies and there's four and a half of us to try to make sure we don't lose companies. I think, I think we've done a good job in the Edwardsville industrial park for sure. We certainly look at all the businesses, but we spend a lot of time in Edwardsville industrial park and do at least twelve plus potential calls if we get out there. And that's it. Any questions?
All right. Thank you for coming tonight. We sure appreciate, the presentation was very informative. Thank you for being here. Okay, item five on the agenda, your presentation on financial investment strategies from the city's public management consultant.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Council. Let me introduce to you Doug Gerber, public management consultant. He has an extensive resume as a city manager throughout Kansas, a few communities, very similar to Edwardsville. He has an excellent public financial management background in addition and he and I have spent the last twenty-some days working on this particular project. To kind of be honest with you, I left him alone to get his assessment of what direction we can go with our public finances and we knew early on, and give credit to the council, will recognize this as well, that, you'll hear this, that we were about twenty-seven thousand dollars in interest income on several million dollars. What that says to us is we have a lack of strategy for investing our funds and that was to me concerning, therefore I retained Mr. Gerber to come in and give us some guidance on this. You have a draft policy, you're taking no action on that, that's just for informative purposes and that we hope to, that document gives us statutory authority, gives us all the background that we need and the direction that staff would go to make these investments. It's not the governing bodies position really to decide which investments are the right ones, it's to decide the policy in which staff then takes that direction and makes those investments, just to keep, you know, things on the up. So without further ado, Mr. Doug Gerber.
As Mark said, Doug Gerber, I'm helping the city manager drive some public management and financial consulting, please be here. I have a very brief presentation and I will answer questions as well. So why am I here? Not just because of my public meeting junkie, but actually of trying to accomplish something with you. My task was fairly straightforward and that was to review the investment strategy and policy of the city of Edwardsville, to analyze investment income and then I couldn't really dive into much of that, but also looking at a general financial review. So I did both of those things and wanted to discuss maybe about those. So as you know, you've been around the world or even if you haven't, I believe the Kansas municipalities love talking about public finances being interrelated stool, right? You kind of want an equal balance of property tax, sales tax and other things, including investment revenue, fines, reimbursements, those sorts of things. So the first task, as directed by the city manager, was to look at the policy and the strategy. And the reasons for that are listed here. Of course, we're all aware that we're in a good interest rate environment, so it's important to try to take advantage of those rates and be strategic about it, raise some awareness, find some best practices, some parameters on the policy and our actions, include some statutory references and then as I talked about, that three-related stool, maybe have a more diversified revenue stream and hopefully then it's all interrelated to the course and that gives you as decision makers, as policymakers, more budgeting, less. And I would say right now, the Edwardsville, if you look at the stool, it's probably a little crooked, not to say it's only for what's happening, it's just the stool is crooked in terms of the way things are weighted. We're close to fifty percent in property tax, about twenty-nine percent in sales tax and then the rest we have missing this revenue. I would say you're, compared to cities in metro area, are more like the inverse, certainly a heavier reliance on sales tax and the main weight of property tax, which is obviously, it's nice to have people coming in, pay the bills rather than citizens. So that's something that I think we're hoping to work as part of this policy. So in terms of the current investment strategy and policy, I would say it really is pretty passive, not strategic, it's not really being implemented. And if you look at those last three holes on the left-hand side of the slide, you'll see that zero dollars were intentionally invested, earning us twenty-seven thousand in interest income, one oh six, if that's correct, one oh six interest rates, it's not the title. What is being recommended is I would say more comprehensive strategy with statutory references, it aligns with best practices. I'm not going to pretend that I wrote this all on my own because I didn't. I've been in both the public and the private sector. One nice thing about the public sector is it's okay to borrow legally from other cities. So I took what I thought were some of the best examples of policies and looked them to one that I think may work for that to show. And it, you know, it would be what I would call a costly aggressive strategy. And it, you know, it would be what I would call a cautiously aggressive strategy. If you look through the policy, it talks about, you know, you want to make sure you maintain liquidity. You want to make sure you have a safe investment, but you also want to make sure you maximize investment. So balancing those out cautiously, but also aggressively. I believe that we can probably get towards 4 million targeted investments. That's a very, very conservative approach. Probably won't much of a really get to the brass tacks, but that's, I think that's just a good deal number. And that could generate potentially 200,000 in interest income. Look today, the treasury bonds rates right now for a year-long treasury bond is about 5%, a little less than 5%, 4.98 actually. That's for a year. If you actually, if you look at the six-month rate, it's an inverted curve right now, which I'm sure many of you know. That means things do come in this, it potentially means it's the bellwether of a recession. It could mean other things, but the six-month rate is about 5.3. So if you have a little bit shorter, you probably do need to better. And that $4 million is really just general fund amounts. I didn't really look too closely into the bond funds, although there's some potential there as well. You just always have to be careful about arbitrage. Familiar enough with it to be dangerous, but it's certainly something that I think we would want to have, maybe on council waiting on as well. Because it's a very, very specific form that's that you can't earn more interest than you can. But even, even if you're just very cautious, I think we could increase our interest rates by 10 miles. Two mils, it's nice to get a pocket bill, and so, yeah, that gives you flexibility. I've been, I know Edwardsville had a bond rating downgrade in recent past. I've been through many bond rating calls in my career, and you don't need to go through all of these, except to say that these are the things that when they are doing a bond rating, that the bond ratings will get. And it's fair to say that many things on this list could benefit Edwardsville. For example, the use of the rolling multiple capital improvement plan for identified fund sources. You know, now we're sort of morphing into general finances, but again, you know, it's all related. So whether that's a five-year plan, a three-year plan. In my past, I worked with utilities, 10-year plans. So it just, it's what works for Edwardsville, but just having a plan is one of the important moving forward. And then that last one I highlighted, underlined and bolded, and that is a formal investment policy that follows state guidelines with monthly performance reports. It's not enough just to have a policy and then stick it on the shelf, you know, you need some metrics and you need to report back on those. Whether that's myself, the city manager coming forward, or just a written report, whether it's some sort of monthly report. Again, I don't like the label, these are the things that are important moving forward. And then, again, moving into some general observations, I think overall, it's probably appropriate to be relatively close to the financial policies. Try to align those with some best practices. Not saying this is happening, but ensure expenditures don't exceed revenue, water's flat, right? I mean, that's the obvious thing, but it's always seems to be trending towards a scripted deadline. So just a cursory look at utility billing process tells me that there could probably be some potential improvements there. Again, like you just heard, you're not given a report, so not to suggest ED isn't happening here, but that's, that's how you do the deal. And change that sales tax, property tax, other ratio, make it more balanced. As I said, a formal capital improvement plan, and then just a systematic approach to financial management. But in terms of low-hanging fruit and immediate investment improvements, something that needs to be done very quickly. So next steps in this whole process, ultimately, we'd like to have policy adoption, finalize investments amounts, and finalize the strategy. And then do a best agreement with whatever advisor we choose, and then move forward with putting a better amount of investment. Rates are always changing, so security matters. And with that, I will stand for whatever question you have.
Very quickly, one comment I'll point out is one of those bullets, you mentioned the 15% cash on hand, cash reserves, up to 30%. We've been just struggling to get to 15%. We would cheer if it's 18%, but think of the position we could be in at 30%. Gives you so much more options to include if that's a general fund. You just heard the overview of an investment strategy. If you have 30%, you can, guess what you can do with that money? You can invest more of that money. You have some flexibility. So the, though we were concerned in that target over the years, not a criticism, but the target 15 to 18% was reasonable at the time. But our, our goals should be loftier, I think, in that cash on hand gives us so much security in a number of different ways. So I was glad to see that in that presentation, independent of my own opinion. What's happened here, our consultant went in the office and shut the door and did this work. So what you've seen is, you've heard me say some of these various things, and they're common sense to me. But we have one more set of eyes, professional set of eyes, who's consulting in public management that's telling you that these are good things. They may be somewhat low-hanging fruit, like you said, you know, makes sense to take millions of dollars and invest it in a good interest, you know, time. And that just makes common sense. So I, what you're hearing is, I've seen the presentation, but I haven't heard it. But these are things that we've been talking about since July. And what we need to do is somewhat sooner than later, start to retool and rejuvenate some of the things that have been lingering a little bit. But get to work on doing some of the things that we need to do to be in a better financial position. And that's all of the things that you just heard, so I will yield.
To me, I think it's concerning that we, I think we should have done this a long, long time ago. And, and that's, that's a big concern. I really appreciate both of you just getting that, kind of just a new set of eyes on things and going, what can we do? What can we do better? I think when you're looking at $27,000 compared to $200,000, you know, sooner, sooner than later, I think is an understatement. Like if we had a time machine, you know, let's go back and do this even sooner. But that's one thing that I think's been very valuable in just, just having you guys work on this. I very much appreciate what that does for our residents.
Yeah, I don't know the city's budget, but can we afford to lock money up for six months to a year? If we can, then I think that's a smart move.
Doug, oh, you, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, so the general fund budget is about $7.6 million, I think, give or take. The average balance in this sort of checking account, the main account, is about $5 million. Monthly bills are a little less than $1 million. So again, that's very rough math. So we could be quite lucky.
Okay.
I think we'd be, as I said, I think you'd probably do better than 4 million, but.
Let's just be it safe.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And I do absolutely agree with that one. First, surface review, I thought the 4 million was safe. I think in the presentation, and Ethan certainly hit on this, is liquidity, you know, that we have some access should it be necessary. Of course, you lose some of the interest, change it around. There should be some of those gates that we could access funds, should there be some reason to do so. Hopefully, a very good reason.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for your presentation. We sure appreciate you coming out tonight. City manager report.
Heard we report on a number of things, especially in the, our last correspondence. I'll stand for any questions, should we have any, about all the on-doings, lots of things. I think one thing to celebrate right now is that we went out for bid for the Kansas Avenue kind of improvement place road. And so that's, I'm celebrating because it's the first time I've done it. I had to work with our city engineer, of course, and get all that document in place. But that is being advertised as we speak, with hopefully, in April, a meeting in April, we will have some documents for you to proceed. So that's where we're at, and that's probably the biggest announcement.
Fantastic. And then we had a resident who asked, did you have any updates on Richland or the substation?
Yes, ma'am, I don't. The last correspondence, or actually not correspondence, the last conversation that I had about anything to do with, you know, the Evergy. Remember, they talked about the 98th Street, doing all this business? From what I understood after that, they've written, just kind of reevaluated, and that they were going to come from the north, meaning of 110, and coming south from there into Edwardsville as somewhat their distribution or whatever. I'm kind of speaking out of my realm, if you will. But I'm just repeating the conversation that I understood, that the new direction coming to the Osmond property, if you will, that's how I remember it, that Skanel property was going to come from the north. That's, but beyond it, which would make some sense now, given the other announcements. So Richland, we're in design. We've, that's with engineering, and that's, we're on schedule. That is more of a 2025 spring letting, and we should have hopefully some road tore up and road, new road going down. First is the cross drainage, the drainage systems that run through there. We have to fix that. Part of that road deterioration is all due to water. You know, where it's low line, that sort of thing. The first piece we could certainly get from that is the 106 coming across. That's an improvement place, similar to what we're going to do in Kansas as part of that. So what we know is we're in design. We know with the cross drains and the level that they have to be, therefore, we know kind of, they can start designing and give us an idea of what the, the road surface would be, and that we're going to try to build that right at the same speed limit. It's 30 miles an hour. That makes the most sense economically. If you build a 35 or a 40 miles an hour road, it, the cost just soars. It's just unbelievable. So it's very cost-effective of where we are. The preliminary figures are about $1.1 million with no sidewalk. We have 1.3, a little better than that, in monies available for that particular project. And it makes some sense to add the sidewalks in, at least on the Richland. You know, that whole stretch coming east to, to west, we're going to go east to 102nd. And then what that does for us sidewalk-wise is you can connect up to then 102nd, just that little elbow, and then you ride on to Kansas, and Kansas takes you to 98th Street. And that sidewalk at 98 is going to go both directions. So if you're biking, walking, or just want to get to one place or the other, that does add that as, it's not a sidewalk to nowhere for that 100-plus thousand that you would add back into that. It's fairly economical. Plus, they're only moving the equipment, right? The overhead is a little lower if you decide to build the sidewalks when they're put in the street. So that, that's my update at this point. We're designing, we have the preliminary figures, and we're hoping to be under construction, contract, that sort of thing, by spring 2025.
Perfect, thank you. Can I also add, do you have any comments to say?
I don't.
One's from Shriver.
Just a couple. What can we do, this is a city to talk with the bondholders up there on the north end? I, that, I'm sorry, I know myself and council member, well, a lot of us resident, it's frustrating.
It is very frustrating. And as you saw from the presentation, there's not a corner in town, economic development-wise, that doesn't have some challenges. Lack of utilities, sewer, you name it, maybe some of this, you know, legal business, that sort of thing. Maybe a sinkhole, I mean, that's, that's one, you know, and, and so that's been a challenge. For this particular piece of property, it's, it's unique. We're in a, we're in a hard, frustrating position. I did have a conversation with our bond counsel, and my direct question was, have you had a conversation with the bondholders, the owners of the bonds, about, is it, are they the obstacle? And what could the city do? What does the city need to know? Or what could we do to maybe facilitate some sort of transit? What, what is it going to take? Because we've had things before, it's, it come about once a month, one way or the other. Somebody's calling, asking, doing these things, and then that's the big, kind of the obstacle, if you will. And so I'm thinking, if there's an obstacle there, how do we help remove it? And from all indications, there's a meanability there. If the right financial structure's in place, it can be paid for, and they're willing to do that. Now, the suggestion is, you know, who's telling what side of the story? There's two sides to this whole thing. So was it a developer who said, I'm just not entertaining that? Or was it the bondholders who say they weren't entertaining? My understanding is the bondholders said with the right structure, they would entertain the development. And for whatever reason, sometimes, things just simply don't work out, and you can't come to an agreement. And we may have had a couple of those, just because of price tags, just because of some of the regulations and that sort of thing. So my understanding from the conversation with our legal counsel related to the bond is that there is some immeasibility from the bondholders to do a deal. They're not, they're not preventing it completely, but of course, they invested to make money, they're in a business. And so they're, they're kind of watching their own, if you will, and looking out for their own.
Who brings the businesses to them?
All kinds of people. I think Ray Kendall kind of mentioned that there's a number, a lot, a lot of prongs in this. It could be, somebody just walks in off the street, it could be, hey, I know somebody, more economic development people out there saying, hey, if you're going, you know, east of Kansas City, this may be your location. There's a pretty heavy network, and there's, I think there's active recruiting. If there is a, let's say, a rumor out there, I think our folks are working on our behalf and calling you up and saying, hey, I've heard you talking about this. Come and talk to us, right? So I think it's from all aspects they're doing, and they're being attracted there. And certainly, everybody knows what's going on around us, so a developer's saying, hey, here's some vacant land, let me ask the questions. And so that's kind of where it starts.
Just curious, it's ready. That's, that's the frustrating part. Okay, thank you. I do have a, a big thank you to the city staff, police department, and I think a really big thank you to Chantel, who's probably taken so many phone calls, so many residents, so many companies, so many questions, so many phone calls, so many, so many walk-ins, whatever the case may be. We had a catastrophe here in Edwardsville, so everybody's had to group together. But thank you, I'm sure it's been a, not a burden, but it's what, it's what everybody has to do, but it's probably a little frustrating, so residents.
The work increased tenfold in an hour.
Right.
That's how that goes.
Right.
Suddenly, you know, the same amount, staff all doing good things. We've got to handle this and be customer-oriented still, you know, so I think she's done a terrific job. And luckily, she had some experience with that, and it's not a new task, as, as many of them are these days.
Exactly, exactly.
So we have some experience in that, so she's done a really good job.
Mr. Gerber, thank you for your presentation. This is, I think, a little exciting.
Yes.
Very exciting. And Fogel Anderson and Finkel and Williams, thank you for your presentation, I think. Is it just you left, Ellen? Oh. Thank you, that's exciting to see that as well. I know there's several of us that have sat up here for years, and I, it's exciting to see this. It's exciting to get this ball rolling again and give our employees nice facilities to work in. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Councilman Mott?
I got to follow you after you did that. Same thing I was going to do. Mark, I think that there's that three phases working up there on state right now. They've been putting poles in up by the egg hall and all down, and I think down toward 118th Street. I've saw, I've seen the telephone poles up there, so they must be pretty close on that. Where the, where Dorothy's house was, it fell down, you know what I'm talking about there. The most amazing thing I ever saw.
Up there by the.
Where they cleared off.
By the Speedway?
Yes.
That one that.
Oh, my God.
Oh, it's gone, I saw it this week.
Yeah, they had it down in about two hours. I wanted them to put a tornado down there. I really appreciate the discussion on the city facilities. That's extremely thrilling and exciting, because we've been talking about that for a long time. We've got to get our police out of that trailer, and we've got to get some room to put our assets in, in the fire department. So I was going to question a little bit on that about, we do have some retail businesses that are on this city property. Were they taking into any consideration on these meetings, on having a facility for that? And another thought on that, since I'm not on that committee and don't really know who is, I'd like to have something done with a post office. Maybe try and get a post office. is, I'd like to have something done with a post office, maybe try and get a post office hub down here and get out of that raggedy building that Kelly's got up there. I think that some of that could be facilitated into that facility, since we're going to kind of call this a city center. And I might be off out there somewhere, but that's just kind of what my thoughts are. So, the other thing is, we need to be discussing public works facilities, too. I think we're forgetting about them. I think we have equipment that was damaged pretty bad in hailstorm we had last week. You know, we got a lot of brand-new equipment that costs a lot of money, that's going in body shops and now because it had to be parked out in the weather, and I don't think that that's very copacetic to protecting our equipment. Appreciation, kudos to Greg Kendall for showing up tonight and giving a presentation. It gives you a real good feeling that, to know that there are people out there fighting for us to get some development down here in Edwardsville, so appreciate you for that. And that's all for me.
Councilman Bishop?
Yeah, how much is, so far, the estimates on fixing all of our brand-new equipment that was sitting outside?
$130,000.
What is our deductible? Is it, is that, is it going to be, is it going to be one incident or is it going to be each vehicle?
Each one.
Each one? Phew.
So far, now, the MBR has sent a number of letters, some of that's being discussed, but I don't think they're going to come off of that policy that each one is covered separately. No different than maybe at my house, if two or three had gotten damaged, each one of them has its sign that that, so you're thinking, if there's 17, there you can go, you know, regardless of, if it's over that $1,000, it will be, they'll be, we'll pay the first thousand for each one of those.
We need a new insurance company, because my claim is over, is just $1,000 deductible for everything. It's covered the house, the barn, the trucks and everything.
We are in a Midwest public risk, you know, liability risk pool, and that also creates our health insurance. It's actually probably the game in town for us is to stay there now. Again, they, there has been some correspondence, I just need to delve into it, about how they're going to handle this, because we're in an insurance pool in the entire metropolitan area, where, you know, several counties got hit, and there are several cities in those counties which belong to the MBR. So, they're certainly trying to work out, they have rules, right, and that sort of thing, so some of that is, they just have to follow what you signed up for.
Yeah. So, thanks for, you know, we talked about this, getting on the storm-chasing roofers that are not, you know, licensed in the state or anything like that. Thanks for staying on top of that. You're not seeing very many signs that don't have 816 or 913 on them now, so, but they're still, they're still out there. I've had to run a couple off of my place, even when we got a sign in the yard already. But, thanks, Ellen. Tell your crew, thanks a lot, and tell Fogel Anderson when you see him, we said thanks, even though he left, it's okay, now. Has to look to Roger. All right, okay, that's all I have.
Okay, Councilman Miller?
Comments?
Okay. So, we'll wrap up pretty quickly. I think we had a great meeting tonight, a lot of great information coming out of this meeting. Thank you so much to everyone who spent time with us and gave the great presentations. One thing that I think is a really great focus of our city facilities, and we've had a lot of conversations about this, is that we're looking at ways that they'll serve our public, and so they serve our residents here, keeping the residents in mind the whole time, I think, and recreating the heart of the city is so important. Other than that, wish everybody a happy Easter, and we'll see you next time.
Post offices are great, I think. That's a crappy little building.
I mean, I wouldn't care, I wouldn't care if they tore it down.
Well, the other reason why they haven't tore it down, because it's on the historical register.
Well, either that or one of them, Kelly.